So hello, I'd like to call this meeting the Board of Education on Monday, July 11th to order. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Price, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Porters.
Here.
Mr. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Ham. Mrs. Packard. Mr. Tressel.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Jacob Fitzgerald at age thirty-two. He passed away on July 5th, 2022. He was a former third grade teacher at Concord Elementary for six years. Thank you. Next, we will have the board committees. I guess we're running blind solo here. Have you had a meeting at the Upper Valley recently?
Uh, yeah, we had the meeting at the end of June, but as, as our kind of meetings right now kind of lightens up and everything, so not a lot to report from that, from that meeting, just kind of going through a lot of the, some change in the policies and just like the normal updates and everything, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We continue to get national accolades for their apprenticeship programs.
Yeah, they're, they're winning awards. They had some, some of the leaders go over to Germany for another training. There were some students that did another national type of summer training, so there's a lot of stuff still going on, like traveling in the summer, which, you know, it's good for them to do that way, so they're either in school or working during the school year, so, um, yeah, a lot of great programs going on.
Yeah, we're blessed to have them for students, that's for sure. Um, next, Mr. Moore. I'd like to talk to you about federal funds.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, we, uh, we've done this at various times since I've worked here, sometimes in August, sometimes earlier, but I want to share with you guys a little bit about Troy City Schools' access to federal funds and title programs. Back in May, this is Marshall and I scheduled a time to be here if we had any input from the community regarding our federal funds, and also I'll share with you, you guys tonight, a little bit of the history of that and what they're from. The document that I shared with you is straight from our website, and it looks like this, Troy City Schools to Apply for Funding. Um, the funds that we typically access, Title I, if you go back a page or two, there's a brief summary of each one. Um, and Title I is intended to help students, the academic needs of low achieving and low income children. Title I-D is neglected, delinquent, at-risk children. That typically cross ties into our partnership as the local education agency for West Central Juvenile Detention Center. Title I-SSI, that is a school improvement grant for identified schools. There is a formula there that identifies a school based on the demographics and also based on their academic performance where they can receive some additional funding. The only school that we currently have eligible for those funds is Haywood Elementary. Um, next up is Title II-A, which is Teacher Quality. We also use those funds for class size reduction, so I'll go into that a little bit more momentarily. Title III, Limited English Proficient Language Instructions for Limited English Proficient Students. Title III Immigrant, that one's kind of an odd one. We don't always know at the time when we're going to get funding for that one. Sometimes it comes in later in the fall due to other districts not utilizing those funds, or if there's a reallocation of funds. Title IV-A is Student Support and Expanding Opportunities for Each Child. That is typically school improvement activities and professional development for teachers. Title IV-A, uh, excuse me, uh, not Title IV-A, but, um, IDEA-B, that is a good one. There is a lot of special education funds. Um, we also get some funds for preschool special education. And so I'll talk a little bit about each one of those and what Troy City Schools does with those funds, but I want to put this chart on here. It's also on our website. We give you a year-over-year of about how much money we get allocated from our federal government on those funds. And as I said, it's on our website as well. So in Title I, um, we use that to fund staffing for reading intervention at our buildings that are school-wide title. A school-wide title means that a building has a high enough percentage of students who meet poverty level that we receive additional funds throughout that whole building. That means that the reading specialists who work in those buildings can serve all kids based on these federal funds. Um, the buildings that are school-wide title, Cooks and Forest, Tablehead, and Kyle Elementary. Um, just to throw this out there, we also support our non-title buildings, which is Hook and Concord, and reading specialists as well, just not paid through these funds. We also use this to employ our math coach to support math instruction at title buildings, and they also get a little bit of funds. I'll be honest, most of this goes towards those salaries and those personnel. There's also a little bit of funds for parent involvement, parent involvement nights, or, um, community nights for the neighborhoods to come in and try to share reading, um, reading tools and skills that parents can also use at home to reinforce what's being done in school. Title I-D, um, as I mentioned, we partnered with West Central Juvenile Detention Center about a year, year and a half ago. The rehab center out there was closed, so now it's just detention. The difference is, to try to keep this simple, is rehab was a longer-term placement that included some mental health and, uh, some other type counseling treatments to hopefully help children get through some of this, not just a short-term place. Detention can be anywhere from a day to two weeks. They're just, they're in and out of there fairly quickly, but we are still responsible to helping them educate the children while they're out there. We employ some staff members out there. Those funds we utilize to help pay for those staff members. Every now and then they get a little bit of extra money. We work with them on instructional materials and tools and things like that. Um, the next up, Title I Non-Competitive, as I mentioned, that's Haywood Elementary. Sustainable School Improvement Activities, we use that for a lot of professional development and instructional tools for teachers at Haywood. Right now, that's, as I said, that's the only building eligible for that, so those funds are locked in for Haywood. Title II-A, um, we, we utilize the Title II-A funds for class size reduction, and what that means is when we have a large number of kids in a specific grade level in one of those buildings, we can utilize this to help fund a teacher, to help improve those class sizes. In the past, we've used that typically at Concord due to the large numbers. This year, we had a case where we have, we know we are adding another kindergarten teacher out of Hook, so we're adding, using these funds already for that teacher's hour here at Hook. And also, there's typically some additional funds that we can use for professional development activities that they have in that, uh, Title III, English Language Learners, R-K through five students that qualify for this program. We provide services at Concord for that. That's been going on for a long time, and if you look at the demographic information of students that qualify for the program, I don't know for this year, because we still have kids coming in and out, but typically that number of kids that already live in the Concord District is about seventy-five percent, so it makes sense that the kids are placed up there. Now, we do have families in other neighborhood schools that, from time to time, they, uh, they really not bust their children out there, so they'll stay in their neighborhood school, and they want just total immersion in the regular elementary. And we also support English Language Learners at Van Cleve Sixth Grade Building, Junior High School. We currently have one, two, three, four teachers employed, um, but not, we don't, not, I don't want to interrupt here. We don't get enough Title III funding to cover the type of funds to pay for all those teachers' salaries. It's, it's a smaller amount, so we use it to support them, instructional tools, professional development. We used to spend more on that, on tech tools. Now they're a one-to-one district. That's not as prevalent, but we still have some things that we support them with out of those funds. As I said, immigrant, that's specific for students who are identified as immigrant status to our country. That one comes in kind of late. We don't always know when that's going to come. Um, so, uh, once, uh, towards the fall is usually when we find out if we're going to get some of the immigrant funds. We use that basically to supplement instructional students who are in the immigrant criteria. IDEA-B, as I said, that's a big one. You'll see on the chart. There's a lot of money that flows through that. Um, that money, every year goes to purchase services through Miami County ESC. Sometimes some of that flows through Miami County ESC to provide services for Troy students who are accessing services they provide. Um, as much as that is a big number there, guys, that still doesn't cover all of our expenses that we need to fund that. The early childhood, um, special education funding, that took a big money that we never touched. It's allocated to Troy City Schools, but that's just a formality. You go straight to the ESC to help fund our preschool services that we provide over at the old EdTech building right behind Van Cleve. Title IV-A, enrichment activities, professional development, technology. We use that for a variety of things. We don't always get a ton of money there, but what we, we try to maximize the value in that, to fund some of our professional development activities, set aside some for technology, um, and other things that fall under those criteria. Expanding opportunities for each child is the last one on that list. We don't, we haven't always gotten that, and that one's been fairly recent. Um, the, the intention there is to provide either tools or services to help, um, students who may be, um, low achieving or they need some additional help. We've used that the past couple of years, especially with COVID, to connect that with some of our technology tools that we utilize in Canvas, um, and that's something we evaluate annually on where we want that money to go through. That's not a, it's not a lot, but every little bit helps. Now, it's not on the sheet for these federal funds for this criteria, but the other federal funds, I'm going to take just a moment to share with you, just so you're aware of this, and this is posted on our website too in terms of our application. You hear a lot about CARES Act and SFR Funds, E-S-S-E-R. Um, and just so you're aware of this, we have received in our first round of CARES Act or SFR Funds, we received $555,838.64. Um, we have used that for a lot of technology, a lot of support things that came with around the COVID, to support some of our initiatives to respond to the pandemic. The SFR II Funds, same thing, and all of those have sunsets, where we have to submit a final expenditure report. Jeff handles the, we say, the educational jargon of FER, but we have to submit what we spent up, as much as we came within the timelines. The second round of SFR Funds will come to a close towards the end of September of this year, of '22, and the third round, the American Rescue Plan SFR Funds will come to a sunset in the end of September of '23, so dollar amounts. Mentioned $555,000 and some change on, um, SFR I. SFR II, $2,189,000, $2,189,598.91. I'm not used to talking about such big numbers. Um, and the American Rescue Plan, we call that the third round of our SFR Funds, which is $4,921, $4,921.20. We have, we use that in the past year to pay for the salaries of our online academy teachers. We use it to continue to support our one-to-one Chromebook initiative. Some of the online tools that you hear about, including Chromebooks, uh, Canvas, Screencastify, Kami, other tools that we use to align with that. Um, also some of the other online tools that kids can use, including our supplies for iReady that they can access at home and at school. We've, we've thrown a lot at that. And, um, the second round of SFR Funds of all of our buildings, Detroit Junior High made the most sense to make some HVAC improvements based, it's a, not a brand-new building, but it did have equipment that we could work with to do some changes. Um, network has been going on all summer. You probably saw some of that screening, kindergarten screening with the junior high, that that was.
It was all blocked off.
Blocked off, and you couldn't, you couldn't see.
They were doing the work, but I didn't see any of it.
Keeping you out of there. Um, so in general, that's, that's our update, um, and if we have questions, we're always willing to sit down with people who have ideas or suggestions on one of those funds go. The traditional title funds, the ones I mentioned first, we, we try to use those to offset costs that we know we're going to have on an annual basis. Like I said, the reading teachers, the partnership with the ESC on special education services and things like that. I will take any questions that you may have.
And when do you become aware of what the funds will be?
That's funny. That's funny you ask that, because, um, so when I told you that Beth and I had spent a lot of time to meet here, at that point, we don't know that. Every year, though, the application has to be submitted by January 30th, excuse me, June 30th, June 30th. In a given year, it's hard to know when we're going to find out when the allocations are. So just a brief summary there, there's an online application system. They open it up, but they don't always tell us how much the funds are. I think this year, we finally got notification about two weeks before the application was due.
Yeah, they start populating values on June 15th.
Yeah, and then we have to have it submitted by June 30th, which is, it is what it is. Uh, we just have to have it done. They operate on the fiscal year calendar that we have to have this turned in. So sometimes even when we have these discussions, if people have questions or whatever, we have an idea based on historical trends of what those funds are going to be, but we don't always know what changes can occur in a given year. And sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down, sometimes we have a little tip in advance of certain things are going to go a certain direction, but the funny thing is, it's hard to budget around that, because sometimes in the fall, there'll be either a carryover amount that there'll be some funds they'll throw back to us, or a reallocation based on what happens around the state and things like that. So what we try to do is make sure we take care of the, what I call the essential things that we know we need out of this, which is some of our employees that are funded through this. And we have to verify the employees' accomplishments, that they are, their salaries are funded through federal funds. Um, and whatever other funding that we get, we try to get together and connect, okay, we've got a little bit extra here, how are we going to utilize these funds, things like that, so.
So the application basically tells them, you're giving us this dollars, and this is how we're going to apply it?
Yeah. And there's a, and it was a principle here, the high school doesn't get as much of this as some of the other elementaries do, but there's something called the planning tool, that you have to identify the needs that are in your building that align with our goals as a district, and the, the idea is that the needs assessment and the plan aligns with how the money's being spent. But they don't, yeah, we, they say, this is what it is, then we have to indicate on that application that how we're going to utilize those funds, and then it goes to a submission process. So I, I see it, and I change it to draft completed, then it goes to the fiscal representative, Mr. Price there, and then once he approves it, then it goes to the authorized representative, and it sounds really official, but not official, but even then it goes off to a State Department person, and we have a federal program consultant, and they review it. It also goes through a peer review process, where someone else who's out of the state takes another look at it before it reads final status. Um, once that's done, then we're in final completed, and we don't want to touch it, but every now and then they come back and say, hey, you gotta open this back up, because you got, you're an issue here, or we're changing how we're doing this, or the money's changed, or something like that. It's, um, it's fine. It's what we have to do to be able to utilize. Those are, I try to remind people, federal tax dollars are Troy dollars that went to DC, and they're coming back. And so we want to make sure we access all those funds and let them out and use them all.
So when you're applying, is it basically putting in our demographics to see what we qualify for, or are you putting in our wants, and you have to justify it?
It's more about how you're going to utilize these funds. So the demographic piece that identifies our buildings and their needs, that's done through, it's not done in this process. It's already populated through a different process, which, um, when you came in, there was a, a young lady working in this office over here named Katie Salo, and she does our Educational Management Information System work. We refer to that, there's some jargon for it. We refer to that as ENS, and that's where we report all of our student data to the state. They use those reports to then determine what percent of, for example, students in poverty, or students identifying with disabilities, first English language learners. Those numbers then determine some of the, um, allocations that we get. So then they say, here's what we think you should get, here's the allocation. Now, you complete the plan to say how do those funds meet with your district's needs based on the criteria of questions that they have. So we fill out questions and, uh, responses to those questions to identify how we're going to use these funds, and then they tell us if we're, uh, if we're approved to move forward or not.
This upcoming year's funds are based upon last year's student demographics? Okay, and that's, that's locked in? That's how, that's all been submitted and locked in? Yes.
So that it all comes off, yeah, one year and every year is based on our previous year's course. That's why so much information, people wonder sometimes what works. The information is very important, very important that we collect. Free or reduced lunch shop, to be honest, is extremely important for us to give, um, information to the right people so that that funding follows the children. Other questions, guys?
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Anytime. You have questions? Glad to, glad to help. Thanks.
All right, so we have the first chair in the public. If anybody has any questions that they'd like to submit of anything on the agenda? If not, we will move forward to the treasurer's report. So first, I would like to congratulate Jeff and his staff for, um, getting the Troy Auditor of State Award for the Clean Audit for Fiscal Year 2021. So congratulations, Jeff, and to your staff.
Thank you.
Um, I know often you take that in stride, but that's pretty significant. Only a few in the states, and we've gotten a few, so kudos to you for getting that accomplished. On that note, um, I would like to get a vote or a motion for the consideration of approval of, for the board minutes for last, uh, regular meeting on June 1, or June 13th, 2022.
And June 30th?
Yeah.
And June 30th. Yes, thank you.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Tressel. Any questions for anybody? If not, Mr. Price, will you call the roll?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tressel?
Yes.
Mrs. Porters?
Yes.
We made it.
Yeah. Next, we'd like to get a motion for the, um, reference Exhibit C, which is the monthly total revenue, total expenditures, any balance, scheduled revenues, et cetera, for financial reporting. Thank you, Mr. Tressel.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any questions for Mr. Price, or would you like to highlight some of it?
A couple things. Uh, first of all, we received our final cafeteria report last Tuesday, I believe it was. So we were able to finish up closing after the month end and fiscal year end of June 30th, 2022. There were no changes, so what was presented to the board and approved remained constant.
Good.
And you'll see, uh, return of advanced funds with this packet should match everything that, um, was advanced out. Also, I placed before you this evening, um, this document is usually put together in anticipation of an administrative retreat in early August. Um, draw your attention to the second page, Financial Summary. There's, um, eight fiscal years in comparison. That's what I can put on the page. Um, revenue, expenses, any balance, whether or not it was a negative or positive spending for the year, and then days of operation of funds on hand. And if you remember, ideally, we like to be in that ninety to hundred twenty days. That allows us time to react of any major issues that would happen to come up during any given fiscal year.
Nice to see we've gone back to that, or recovering.
Yes.
Do you look at the, the days of operation for the next five years? Like, will you present that at this retreat or anything like that? How the forecast is looking?
This is just a quick summary. Forecast gets updated, uh, in November, and that's usually presented, uh, to the administrative group after the board approves it, just as a quick review and a kind of a notice that, uh, it's been put together and it's out there, so. And then also, the last couple pages, um, we do have three, um, levies that have expirations, all five-year levies, two of them operating, one of them are permanent improvement levy, and this is just a reminder when they expire. So we will be entering, that renewal timeline, uh, a year from this fall.
We're led to do that one, one year prior to expiration?
Yes.
And we, it looks like they, at some point, they jumped them to five years, and then that's just been the consistent of looking at five years.
Renewal, yeah.
Is that, is there a limit that you can only go for five years, or?
No. Uh, well, it used to be yes. Um, you can go up to ten years, or you can change them to a continuing or less are your options, so.
What's the thought maybe for, it looks like we've got two coming, two will expire in 2024. Um, has there ever been any issues in the past? I see they, they passed, obviously, but about maybe staggering them, so they're not both expiring in 2024 historically or anything? Is there, you know?
There's never been any discussion along that. I mean, five years, I mean, it's just when they were originally in the past.
There was a time we had more than three levies, so, you know, the other years also had levies.
There was another operating levy on the books, uh, which was allowed to drop off once the, um, earned income tax was approved. That was part of the campaign promise.
Okay.
We've never made a conscious effort to try to stagger into individual years.
We typically go, like, we did in the past, my experience was, we renewed the capital improvement one year, and then the year, like, 2023, and then did the operating levy the next year, so they wouldn't actually fall on the same election.
Oh, you did one in the fall, one in the spring?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of what I was just kind of getting at, is what do voters think if they see two on the same track?
It's too confusing, especially with.
Thought card.
There's a lot of confusion between capital improvement and operating, so it's nice to have them separated.
The other one that's not showing up there is Glahida, which also sits into that model too, so.
That would be 2026.
It shows with five point eight levy typically.
This is point twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, just kind of. Just a reminder.
Some, some strategic thinking, and, you know, if there was ever that issue or, or anything of seeing two on one, but thanks for clarifying that.
We try to avoid that.
Any other questions for Mr. Price? If not, then please call the roll, Mr. Price.
Mr. Tressel?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Porters?
Yes. Next, we have the Then and Now, which is the prior certification of funds by the fiscal officer was not obtained before the contract and order involving the expenditure of money. May I have the motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Thank you, Mr. Tressel. Any questions for anybody? If not, can we call the roll?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tressel?
Yes.
Mrs. Porters?
Yes. Now, moving on to the superintendent's report, we have a motion for the resolution to accept gifts for the Troy School District.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Tressel. Mr. Piper?
Well, it's the first month of the fiscal year, so the clock is reset, so we are off to a good start. You'll see a variety of donations to our programs, students in classrooms from many different sources, ranging from $22 from Box Tops all the way up to $2,800 plus for the High School Esports Club from Troy Rotary. Our July total is $4,775.57, which of course matches our fiscal year total so far now. Yes.
Once again, we have a.
So those, those esports, is that, uh, is that basically our, our full budget for the esports 200, or do we?
Um, they're still not really a fully authorized club, so they don't have much of a budget. I mean, it's, it's really equipment. Uh, they might do some snacks and that kind of stuff, but this was an equipment purchase for them to help beef up their, what they have equipment-wise.
So it kind of is, it is their budget for now?
Yeah.
Okay. How long's it been in, how long's it been? Not very, two years? That's what I thought. It's really new, yeah.
Pretty good number of students involved in it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, how many, how many students do you have?
Uh, it varies. Uh, we've had upwards of ninety students. Um, so it, it's, it's pretty cool. I mean, they do competitions. Um, last year, they went to a competition and won unexpectedly, and so students, in your first year, you're not supposed to go in, but they, they did, and so students, uh, won scholarships, um, for that. And so, what I really enjoy about it is that it's a lot of our students that aren't involved in other clubs or activities, so it gives them an opportunity. Um, and then there's various levels. Uh, kids go just for fun, and then there's a group that is competitive and competes, um, at a pretty high level if, if playing video games is such a thing, so, um, but they, they enjoy it, and it's, it's great, so.
It's continuing to grow too across the state.
It is. I have a friend whose son-in-law is the esports for the Pacers. Like, that's his job. He goes and recruits people to do esports, which I find, what a gig, eh? And goes worldwide, and I'm like, wow, how fun's that?
Awesome.
Yeah.
Is it, um, is it like you're playing the video, like PlayStation, Xbox games, like Madden, or is there special games that are like dedicated that, you know, I don't know?
So they'll play cer, they'll play certain games, and it depends on the tournament as to what the game is, or it might be a couple of games, but it's, it's games that you can purchase. Smash Brothers, Smash Brothers is one, um, that's probably one of the biggest, and so then they compete against other teams in those games, and then whoever comes out on top is, is the winner. It's pretty good.
They're all games you can buy, so if you want to practice stuff, then come compete.
I was gonna say, you want to test your skills, I think we've got some pretty high-level things.
I don't think I need the high level.
Okay, that's awesome. Awesome. Well, thank you to our generous community for their continued support. Um, Mr. Price, would you call the roll?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tressel?
Yes.
Mrs. Porters?
Yes. Moving on, we have the approval of the student handbook. Moving on, we have the approval of the student handbook and code of conduct for the 2022-2023 school year.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Tressel.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
This is something we do every summer, and Dr. Moore kind of runs points, I'll let him talk here in a second. He collaborates with principals to make sure that our handbooks are pretty uniform across the district. There are some small differences, of course, from high school to elementary, but every year we update those handbooks with information and get board approval, which really gives them the full effect of board policy. But Dr. Moore, I know you shared some of the changes that are highlighted, but do you want to hit some key points there?
The largest piece on there that's highlighted in all of our handbooks is referenced to student attendance policy. And Mr. Gobone and the high school team worked closely on this one to, to summarize that. We have had a very consistent attendance policy there. Since then, we've also had an update from the old board policy to NEOL. At least Ohio Leadership Academy policy that we use, which is great. That, and also the language from House Bill 410, which defines, you'll see in that language about hours of attendance and what prompts certain triggers for a student to either their parents to be contacted or there to be an absence intervention plan and things like that. Including in there is what constitutes a medically absent excuse. So there were some things in there that, the daily operation, I think, for kids, principals, families, administrative assistants, will be pretty much the same, but there were some things that made sense to adjust the sequence of language there, as well as what constituted a medically absent excuse that is in our board policy, and we make sure that that was clear in there as well. So we had a meeting with the principals, and Dave, you're welcome to chime in here. The high school team with Dave had worked up some revisions that made more sense to them sequentially, presented that to the other building principals instead of providing feedback if you have that. We reviewed it here as well, with Mr. Piper and Mrs. Sullivan, and it made sense. The one thing we do want to do is keep them the same on that attendance piece, so that it matches board policy K through twelve.
Sure.
So that's why that is the biggest section of bright yellow that you have on there. But the language, I'd say is pretty much the same, just in a different sequence or a different order. So that's the biggie on there. Dave, would you like to reflect or share anything with the group on that? Did I miss anything?
No, there were some hangover pieces from prior to House Bill 410 that we were allowed to do, but it just didn't align quite as neatly with board policy with that change in NEOL. And so, once we started looking at it to clean it up, we went, why don't we just make it what it really needs to be? And so that's, again, what Dr. Moore said in terms of why the entire piece is changed and highlighted yellow. There were some references to hours before in terms of things that, or days, I should say, that were in there prior to House Bill 410, and now everything is in terms of hours. So it could have been a bit confusing for our families because it talked about a number of days when really it is hours. So this is a very clean version. When you read through that, I think it makes more sense.
If you remember, House Bill 410 is what changed attendance policy from days to hours instruction, so.
It can be, for parents and families, it can be a bit daunting or a bit, there's just some, what we hope that this does, it leads to more conversation between our school officials and families to describe what that means and how we want to work together. That's the beauty of the absence intervention plan, is that make sure that we have a conversation there to describe that and what we can do to help the child. At Ten School, there's a really nice correlation and causal relationship between attendance and academic performance. There are some other things on there. Mr. Piper, you and I talked about a few things with, one of the things on the very back of there, we're required to post for parent access our PBIS restraint board policy, which we don't want to have to use any sort of the restraints that are certain members of our staff have been trained to do, but we are required to post that so parents, they can click on that, and they can see our board policy on that as well. Aside from that, a lot of the other changes were based on just traditional dates, changes of names and things like that. I'm glad to take other questions on that as well.
I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Okay, you had a couple of questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So I noticed the ACT test dates are in the back. Why do we, do we need those there, or is that just something that?
We have, and I think there's a timeline there where I think we can walk through that, that makes sense. The, there was a time in the state of Ohio where students, when we took the ACT, if they chose to take that, they had to pay that fee out of their pocket to take the ACT. We tried to publish that in our student handbook for high school students so that that's one more location that they would see when those timelines were and when those dates occurred. A couple of years ago, the state of Ohio began an opportunity for all junior students in the spring, late winter, early spring, to take the ACT at a state-funded cost. So all of our kids have an opportunity to do that. So it's maybe not as prevalent now, but we felt it was valuable to leave it in there because it's so important for college readiness and college application. So that students, if they need one more chance to take that test to try to improve their score, we've left it in there. I think it's a good thing that's, again, one more location for kids to know they can look to see what those dates are.
What happens if the dates change, then do we need to make an amendment to this whole handbook?
Typically, once they publish those dates, they don't change them. The ACT doesn't. Now, what we do have in there, the district-wide Detroit City Schools window, I think it's the last thing on that page where it says TBD. That's a window that we set. We don't put that in there until we get together and talk about our whole testing calendar. And once we have that, I would anticipate asking you guys to update that whole handbook over that, if that's what you're asking, because we published that to the, all the juniors that are there.
Yeah, it's kind of meant if the dates are there, if they change, is it easier to have it not in a board-approved handbook so that you could just change the dates on the document type of thing?
Well, the thing about those dates, though, I think we're talking about two different things there. The to-be-determined is for a.
Yeah, not the TBD, the one.
The ones above there, ACT determines those, they don't, they don't solicit or even put the change in. Those are better dates, yeah.
Okay.
They don't move them a lot, they.
Gotcha.
Those are nationwide.
And we just put them in there for informational purposes. If it changes, it wouldn't cause us to have to change this.
Mr. Piper had shared too, there was another question, if you don't mind me. There was a question about grade point average and what's included in that or not. So high school students are able to audit courses. So the audit template or the idea is that a student can sit in the class, try to learn material out of that, but they don't get a grade for that, they don't get a credit for that. There's, they can only audit one course at THS, so there's not a ton of kids that do that, but their opportunity is there. If you audit a course, that is not included in your GPA. Other courses, AP, College Credit Plus courses are included in there. Some are weighted, AP courses typically are, honors courses typically are, and CCP courses typically are.
Okay.
I'm not sure if I answered that question right either, if that's the question you were asking.
Well, maybe I didn't word it exactly how I was thinking. I've heard of, in the past, some students have said they don't want to take classes at like Edison if they're in the running for soliditorian or valedictorian because they could take weighted classes here. And I don't know if this is, if this is the part where, you know, we set that policy in the student handbook or if it's set somewhere else, and if that's something that we should think of, do you weight those college classes so that it don't encourage, you know, won't discourage one of our top-end students from not taking those classes because they want to get a weighted class here? And so I guess my first question is this, is this where we set that in the student handbook? I mean, there's a lot, I was trying to, I haven't went through some of it, but I certainly didn't. Or is that still policy even too?
So any college credit plus, regardless of where they take it, is weighted, correct?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
So CCP has their own rules. And if it's taken off campus and applies to a class here, then it can be weighted. But for example, we have a business class that's a CCP class, but it can't be weighted because we don't offer any other weighted classes in business. But our English classes, that are CCP, that are, those classes are a weighted credit because we have other weighted English classes. So CCP, I guess the short answer to your question is College Credit Plus sets its own boundaries and standards for what classes can be weighted and cannot be weighted. And really, it's not, there isn't action taken by us as a district to make that decision. We would have some local decision-making on the AP classes that we offer or College Credit Pluses that we, classes that we offer, the honors classes, the classes. So I guess that might help answer your question in terms of which classes we can determine are weighted versus which ones, we just have to follow a set standard of rules.
Initially, the intention was that the State Department was, if we had an honors class, a course, or a weighted course here, we're required to give weighted credit if there was a similar or the same type of class taking at a college or a local university, to prevent that very thing from happening. There could have been a case where a kid may have been told, hey, if you want that weighted grade, which counts in GPA and class rank, valedictorian, scholarships, things like that, you have to take it here because we weighted here, but if they're no. As David said, some of that's been taken out of our hands to avoid that student being in a pinch of making those selections. There are courses that kids can take in College Credit Plus. If they don't align with some of the things we're doing, and there's no matching weighted course here, we don't weight those, but there needs to be some alignment.
And that makes sense too, because some students would be up there fishing for those low-hanging fruit that's not available here and try to bring it back here as a weighted course.
It does require, I mean, our students that take classes off-campus, it requires them, if they're looking for a weighted grade, they just have to check with their counselor and make sure that the class that they want to take at, whichever university aligns with something that we offer here.
So it's compatibility.
Correct, yeah.
So they can find it, is what you're saying? They can find the weighted class.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Okay, gotcha, yep. I don't know how old that information that I was told, or if it's a one-off, or different things like that, and, you know, I know things change, so that was, that was my biggest question there.
There are many unique situations, it's hard to.
I know, I know, I'm not perfect every time, but if they want to take a CCP class, they can, they can find one that's weighted if they, if they try hard enough, most likely.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, they're a pleasure.
Any other questions?
I think I have four. So on.
What was about the fees? That's the next item.
Oh, yeah, that's the next one. So on the dress code, I noticed there's no mention of anything political that says you can't have anything political or not. So I remember we had back in February or March, a parent who had a kid, who had a Let's Go Brandon t-shirt on, and it was told that they had to take it off. So did that violate the policy? Is this, is this a different policy? Did it used to have something to do with that? I was just kind of looking at either Dr. Moore or you, or.
So for that particular case, that wasn't necessarily a political statement. It was the profanity aspect of it, because it's commonly known to mean something profane. Students are allowed to exercise their First Amendment rights as long as it doesn't disrupt the educational process. So typically, political things are protected unless they're disruptive.
Gotcha, so we're classifying that as the alternate meaning of it, not the political statement of it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Like in the past, like when I was in high school, a long time ago, there was, Spud McKenzie was the Budweiser mascot. So you couldn't wear things that had Spud McKenzie because you were promoting Budweiser. It wasn't that dogs were outlawed, it was that Budweiser was not being promoted, so.
The dress code policy does reference suggestive language, and this isn't the only example. There's been a number of cases where suggestive language implies.
Simple as some, you know.
Some other meanings and things like that.
Right.
To answer the other, the other part of your question, the only change on the dress code portion for the high school is that there's a line in there that we put back in. We've taken it out, we thought it might make it clearer, and actually didn't. So it's the part that says midriff, shorts, skirts, I mean, I'd be excessively short. Tighter, shorter, midriff must not be exposed. So that was removed, and it caused more confusion, which was not the intent, so it's just going back in. So that was in a previous version.
And the other grade levels handle with that current language as well. It's not as, some, some things are different at high school than they are at elementary school, so.
Hopefully, they'd understand that. Any other questions?
That's all.
Not, thank you. Hello, Mr. Price?
Mr. Tressel?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. Next, we have a motion to adopt the 2022-2023 student fee schedule that is in the appendix.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fox, thank you, Mr. Tressel. Mr. Piper, any comments?
Not really any increases that I'm aware of, just a couple additions. There was a high school course that was added under industrial tech. I'll let you talk, Mr. Peter, Dr. Moore, you comment.
Well, I would love to talk about fees. So the general student fee that looks like this and applies to all students and identifies what students pay, we hadn't changed that in a long time until last year. Last year, we made, bumped that up to $40. We are not increasing that this year, that's the same as last year. Part of that component is additional, by taking on the one-to-one initiative, there's some additional costs that go along with that as well. That one makes sense. That one's staying the same. I'll speak a little bit, and I will also, if Mr. Gobone would like to add anything. We have on the high school fees, and a good point was raised to me is in changing the fees, we normally talk about them, don't highlight them, we certainly could do that, we could do that, it'd be an easy fix. The only changes for the high school fees are under the industrial technology head of the career and college readiness is a $5 per year, this Career Center Satellite Program. We approved that as an addition to our plans for learning last month. There are some changes to the, excuse me, to some other course fees. Orchestra was $25 last year, that is down to $15 this year, that was reduced. And two D studies in the art program was $18 last year, that's bumped up to 20, but digital arts was 20 last year and it's down to 18. Those are the only changes on the high school fees. I would say minor, benign in terms of overall changes.
They just stayed pretty flat year over year like this?
We like to keep them, yeah, as long as possible.
We've tried not to, just to, to keep some of that expense off of our families a little bit. I am concerned about pricing in the next couple of years of some supplies and material. We just have to monitor that closely, but what we want to do is, is again, try to keep that off of our families. Anything you want to add to that, Dave, or?
No, I appreciate, I mean, every year, ask the department chairs to take a look at these numbers and dollar amounts. And those two changes that you saw in art came as a direct reflection of Joe Hartman looking at costs and materials, and so that's why one went up a little. The other, she was actually able to save some money on some things, so that's why that one went down a little bit. That's something that they do and really appreciate your input on.
All right, any questions? If not, Mr. Price, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tressel?
Yep.
Mrs. Porcher's?
Yes. Finally, we have the motion to approve personnel items in Exhibit I.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Tressel?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Mr. Barholz?
It's not a whole lot here, we're in pretty good shape. You'll notice, I just want to call out under resignations, Michael Racy, Brooke Sager. One that's not on here, we've got, I got over the weekend, this contingent upon a board action on the 14th, is Jason Scott, that offered an assistant principal's position down in Beaver Creek. So those three in particular got, well, Brooke and Jason got assistant principals jobs, and Michael's going to be athletic director. So wish them well, congratulations to them. So that leaves us, we've got Brooks, we've known about Brooks for a while. We've got her position filled, but Michael and Jason, we just posted, and we're going through that process. Those are the two full-time teachers that we're looking for yet. The other thing I want to point out, two more things down under supplemental contracts. You'll notice Mark Goldberg, tennis, RC Girls, head coach, year 52. Just wanted to call that out. And I wanted to call out under certified supplemental contracts, Keisha Smith, cheerleading junior high school football. She's going to lead us in a couple cheers here, and I just want to let you know, you only have 51 more years to go.
Well, there is a goal to strive for. Well, kudos, I mean, the fact that our staff is getting promoted to some pretty major positions is a credit to Troy schools, so while we will definitely deeply miss them, I'm really proud that we were able to have our teachers move into such prestigious positions, so.
It's kind of like the old mother.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think this is a, well, since I mean, this is, the number is higher than normal, so wow.
Well, then Michael opens up a coaching position as well, right?
Yeah.
Is that still open, or?
I think we, I don't want to speak out of turn. It's not official yet, but I think we have the varsity position filled, and there'll be a backfill. Somebody internal is going to move up to the varsity spot and will backfill the junior varsity position.
So they're still able to do their open fields and such this summer, and it's still, we're not having a gap there?
And Michael's still around. He's helping with the transition. He was in the building today. Michael and Jason both were. It was like a parade of everybody who's leaving today, so. But they both came in and are helping in that transition.
Does Jason coach anything?
No, no.
Okay.
That speaks to their credibility.
Social studies department chair.
They're both department, they're both department chairs. He oversees the pathways program, so it's, we've got some, some important positions to fill.
Can be a very busy guy, Dave.
You were wondering where you were going to be this summer, right?
That's right. Glad I got my vacation.
You're going to need it. All right, Mr. Price, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Tressel?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mrs. Worchers?
Yes. Next, we have the second hearing of the public. For any other comments anybody has outside of the exam? If not, at this point, we will adjourn into
I'd like to ask one other question.
Absolutely, I'm sorry.
Sometimes we kind of do that around the horn type of thing.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So can maybe someone talk on the article, the Citizens for Troy Schools donor issue in the newspaper? Just a little bit more on what, what that, who that group is and, and does it affect, you know, how does it affect us, or whatever?
I don't think it does affect us. Craig Kersey has been the treasurer for Citizens for Troy Schools since before I came. He files all the paperwork for the donations and how the finances are handled on that committee. For several years, vending machine money had gone into that account, again, before I came, and you remember?
What has actually occurred is the board elections, I believe, performed a vendor, what they're calling a vendor audit. And they sent information requests out to those vendors to supply information. All that information was gathered from the vendors. In fact, we got some calls because I couldn't remember exactly what levy it pertained to and all that. So we had to go back and look up their data to check and which campaign it tied to gave them that information. But what came, what, the one vendor that's in question, based upon their information that was provided, was classified as a partnership LLC, so then they requested names of partners. They were not willing to give that. So that's where it's sitting.
So what's the next step to the?
I have no idea. We're not involved.
That's not our group. That's a citizens group?
Correct, yes, yep.
One thing to think about there, Mr. Fox, is the whole school levy process. There's been a law, we just talked about this the other day, about some of the expectations of the state auditor and the role of school officials. And that's why we have a whole separate committee, Citizens for Troy City Schools, to handle some of those funds and things like that. Well, you've all been involved in the past in those kind of things. So that's, that's part of why, as Jeff said, it's not, it's more of the committee work, and Mr. Kersey would put that on that as opposed to.
Yeah, we've always been very careful to try to keep that clear line between where you're not using school funds for campaigns. And this was always a natural, and it's been a common use, I think, through several districts over the years. I'm trying to remember when we first did the point contract, because that was probably in the early two thousands. Because R.C. Collett was the first one that walked up and offered the opportunity. And it kind of came on the coattails, I think, of the, I don't know which came first, the school or the strawberry festival, but they, they kind of coattailed each other. And it just gave them an opportunity because now we have the machines and the buildings and everything else. Gary, I think it's Gary Stickell, he was the treasurer for the campaign prior to
So I'm not sure why it's an issue.
Yeah, so it's just, you know, it's unfortunate that they're taking the position they are at the board elections. And somehow, it's got to get cleared up because it's, I think it's an appropriate use of funds because they are not, by any stretch of the imagination, school funds.
Correct.
You know, in the traditional sense of being state dollars or levy dollars or, you know, tax dollars in any way. And that's the whole purpose of trying to keep that segregation, so.
Yes.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Any other questions for anybody? If not, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel. We will not be making any decisions at this point, so. After that, in the session, so.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Tressel. Mr. Price, would you call the roll?
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tressel?
Yes.
Mrs. Worchers?
Yes. Thank you for everyone who has attended. Appreciate your time.